Welcome to the Tuesday, April 10th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. It all starts, we'll call to Farley. Farley, starting.
Lou Soye.
Ross Chivik.
Simon Chapman.
So I'm gonna appoint Grant for John and Kathy for Lindsay. And we have a public hearing, starting with item A. Z 2017 1275 of BB Company LLC requesting a three lot re-subdivision on property located on Colbridge Road Plainfield, map 27, block 6, Lot 5C, RA 60 zoning district.
For the record, my name is Paul Archibald, Archibald Survey. I'm representing BB Company in Eric's area where BB Company is here. This is a, this is a page that... You can see they're not... If you look at the back page, you get a better idea of what we've done throughout the years on the project. At one point, the project was before you were a copy, if anybody wanted to see the actual original property, which is so-called subdivision, which was the very, very first one that was done, never built, never put into place and all that. Then BB Company came through and bought this here, and then we came in and did a subdivision called Finland, which we came in for you, had a town road approved, we had 11 lots cut a week ago, it was a conservation subdivision, we did that. After which, the next part of it was, we went down here and had three more lots added off of Kate Downing Road. And now we're in the final phase here, it's Colbridge Road here, so we're adding the final three lots, which is a re-subdivision of the large lots here on Colbridge Road. This has been through Brevins, it's been through Health Department, and everything is a... We have one front lot on here that's at 200 feet of pocket, and then there's an existing 50-foot right-of-way that comes in off of Colbridge Road, which we're going to use as access to rear through lots on Colbridge Road. The soils are well up here. The other thing that we also did, we sat down and talked a little bit, and there's always been a little issue with the width of Colbridge Road, the type of Colbridge Road hitting down with Eric here. We've gone ahead and designed that each of the entrances into here are going to be wide up here, we're looking to be wide enough to allow a turnaround, and this one here is going to be wide enough to allow a car to go by path, so it's going to be almost like a pass by lane on both the proposed driveways to get in with that. And then the last thing that we're gonna talk about, what is the open space fee that goes here. We believe that, a little help me out on this, that the open space fee has already been paid for on this, I believe when we did the first phase here, we had to pay an exorbitant amount of money.
Where do I recall?
And then, then we also had another open space fee that happened to be when we did the conservation subdivision. So the opens, we feel that the open space has been paid for on this subdivision.
But it actually has been taken care of three times. The first subdivision, so-some's property, it was cut into four lots and they paid a fee on all four lots. When they did the conservation subdivision, they granted, what, 20 acres or so to the state of Connecticut.
Correct.
For us.
Yes.
The other subdivision they did on Colbridge, where they could not require it because they renegated twice, and this one they're all requiring.
So, as you can see, I think this is going to be the final phase of what the whole thing was going to end up being, so we're looking forward to the subdivision of three lots.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment or a question for the applicant, if you could stand up, state your name and what your comment or question is.
No, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission. Historically, I'm familiar with that property, it's always been wet, no, it's wetlands only being crossed.
The Wetland Commission did approve the subdivision.
So it is, it is approved?
Yes.
So the lots will be beyond the wetlands, you have to cross wetlands?
One driveway crosses the wetlands and that's what's over there.
We have one wetlands crossing for this lot here. Up in these rear lots here, the only little piece of wetlands is up in the field here. The main wetlands on the whole piece went from here, came all the way down and tied it to Kate Downing Road, as it came down Kate Downing Road. So this is the only piece of wetlands that we're going to be crossing here, and everything else is high and dry.
Yeah, that was my question.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment or question for the applicant? Any commission members with questions for the applicant? Any comments from staff?
No, there were a few comments that I had and followed, but those are applicable subdivision.
So if there's no other comments or questions from the audience or the board, I'll adjourn motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B. Z 2018 1279, continuation of Strategic Commercial Realty Inc., requesting a special permit for gravel excavation on property located on Jackson Road, Central Village, map 7, Block 53A, lots 41, 43, and 42; map 8, Block 53A, lots 134 and 147, RA 60 zoning district. So when we last met, we talked about having an opportunity to read the Army Corps report. Did everybody get that and have a chance to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. For the record, David Allen, professional engineer in Manasuri, I refer to him as Robert Rovero. And you should have revised plans that were submitted to the engineering office last week. There's not a significant change on them. So if we look at Site Operations Plan Number 7, which is sheet 11. If you look towards the top of the page, you'll see Jackson Road. Based on concerns voiced by some of the budding property owners at the last public hearing, there seems to be a general concern about disturbance in the vicinity of Jackson Road. Your zoning regulations require a maximum of 50-foot setback from property lines or street lines. In response to those concerns that were voiced, the applicant has voluntarily agreed to a 200-foot minimum buffer at Jackson Road, so that's been reflected in the revised limit of disturbance and revised tree line on that Site Operations Plan.
And were there any other revisions besides the change in the buffer? So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone with comments or questions, given new information, feel free to stand up, state your name.
As a matter of courtesy, I live on 42 Jackson Road. If they pollute my well in any way, I am going to sue the town and the people, I'd also give them the permit. And also for the decrease in the value of my property. I live on 42.
Thank you.
Sue Hall, can you show 250 feet here? Show us what, you said the buffer is now 250 feet?
200 feet.
Oh, 200 feet. Can you show that here? What's 200? That's from the people's property?
That is from the actual property line, the right-of-way line along Jackson Road.
You're talking about like their or someone's property?
I'm talking about the property line of the applicant along Jackson Road. Their clearing limit would be set back 200 feet from that.
Okay, you're not talking about the individual homeowners who is 250 feet away from their property line?
It'd be much further away from their property line.
Okay, what, and you have, is that all in the Army Corps of Engineers, like each, has each individual person been approached where it's going to be near their property line and told, what's the buffer, what is it made out of, who replaces the dead trees? Is it 250 feet from their backyard?
Have they been notified? Yes, absolutely. The zoning regulations require us to send certified mail notifying of others within a certain distance of the entire property.
The company has not individually talked to each person who has concerns about their property?
They've been notified by certified mail of this public hearing, so if they're interested, they should be here.
Right, I know, I know. But even the company hasn't said, okay, for good faith, we're in that neighborhood, that this is what we're going to do for you. You have concerns, what are you going to do for them?
I'm trying to explain that right now.
Okay.
So is there any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Well, this is again, Chairman of the Conservation Commission. What is the track record of ONG and is there any other ongoing projects in the state in the latest days compare all this to? I've read this, it's quite an involved document, and I have to say, it's very well done. Army Corps of Engineers, you know, 70 years' worth of work, so this is really important that we get this right. So is there anyone in the state?
Well, I'll answer the first question. As far as the track record of ONG, from my personal experience in being involved with them on the project for the last 14-plus years, their track record is by far and away better than what I've seen from any other aggregate producer that I've worked with, which is numerous producers. Number one, because of the effort that you can see evidenced by what you have in your hand there, that is a monumental amount of effort to permit a sand and gravel excavation site. Number two, in the event that there have been minor concerns with something where there's a question, were we supposed to do this, were we supposed to do that, where there's ambiguity in that Army Corps or deep approval, they've taken the initiative to contact the regulatory agency and make sure that there's clear understanding of whatever these obligations are, rather than just making an assumption and going out about their business. I feel very confident saying that they're very concerned, that their eyes are dotted and their teeth are crossed and they're doing everything on the up and up. As far as other projects in the state that they're doing, I'm not involved with any with ONG or Strategic Commercial Realty on this scale. They do have another site on the opposite side of Black Hill Road that's been operating for a similar amount of time. To my knowledge, there's been no history of violations there. On this particular property, there's been no history of violations. It's been monitored regularly by your town staff. They've been diligent about site restoration efforts, they've been diligent about keeping appropriate bonding in place for restoration. So I understand you may not like the idea of a sand and gravel excavation in your neighborhood, but I think you can be quite happy with the operator that you do have doing it, that they're certainly capable of doing this in an appropriate fashion and protecting the public to the extent that they can.
Okay, I have a couple more questions while I'm up. The last meeting was a lot of concern about the aquifer. Now, does this aquifer, or does this permit involve the aquifer? And how is it affected after the removal of, you know, the damm on gravel? It was going down five feet. And the aquifer five feet below that, is that correct?
We're maintaining it a minimum of five feet to the groundwater elevation in general, except for areas where we'll be constructing wetland habitat.
Now, has it been any studies that would give us information how the aquifer would be affected after all that gravel removal?
Yes. There's a very detailed study that was done by Myla and I believe in between 2010 and 2012, and involved two years of groundwater monitoring across the entire 500-acre site, as well as top-site areas. That report was submitted as part of this application to support what we're looking to do here.
That was also given to the Corps of Engineers, wasn't it?
Yes.
And as part of their report that you have there, Walt?
Yeah, I'm seeing, I don't know, is this the updated one I have right here? Anyway, so the one I have says the Connecticut DEP...
What page are you on, Walt?
Excuse me?
What page are you on, so we can follow along? All right, so in section 1, item 12 is the top of the page.
So it says that Connecticut...
Paragraph 3, make it seven.
Department of Energy and DEP issued a water quality cert described, required under the Second 401 Water Act based on review of private... So that cert okayed the aquifer issue.
That certification really has nothing to do with the aquifer. That certification is required as part of the federal regulations, which Army Corps is in charge of administering. And the way that works is, they basically remanded that authority to the Connecticut Deep. So when you apply for an Army Corps of Engineers individual permit, you have to do a separate application to the Connecticut Deep to get 401 water quality certification. If you're approved under a programmatic general permit with the Army Corps of Engineers, the approvals are lumped together as one process. I believe in our case, it was an individual permit application, so we applied separately for that approval from DEP. But it's basically a federal program that has been handed off to Connecticut Deep and now to administer.
I'm not sure that answers my question, or everybody else's question about the aquifer. Does I answer your questions, Walt?
No.
It goes on and on and on. The last meeting, it says that the entire project would be about 30 years?
30 or 40 years?
We're guessing it's market dependent, but that's what we're...
Last page, right here. Next to the last page, third to the last page. Phase mining, reclamation plans, all the phases are listed, and you have a timetable, and if you do math, we're up to 61 years. So it's 30 years and 60 years.
Again, it's market dependent, and those values are based on material that was there at the start of this entire excavation, which was almost 15 years ago at this point. Site's been in operation for that long, so that puts us right in the same ballpark that we were discussing.
I guess, lastly, it was brought up before, but who and how is the overseeing of reclaim process? Who's going to be doing that? Who's going to oversee all the phases and making sure everything is done the way it's supposed to be done?
Well, as far as who's going to be doing it, it's the applicant's responsibility. And other responsibilities that they maintain bonding with the town, in the event that they do not do, they're supposed to. The town has adequate funds, so they can hire an outside contractor on their own to do it. The restoration, the bonding, all that stuff is monitored by your engineering and planning staff.
So the town, one person, how many people?
One person will be there. And I do believe that the Army Corps of Engineers will also make periodic visits.
Yeah, as far as, as far as the specifics of the reclamation, Army Corps and DEP want to see, they will require certain certifications that things are done to, and you may have noticed that in that Army Corps pool, there are certain obligations that the applicant has to report to them on things that are done. And keep in mind too, that when your town staff goes out and they look at something, it's not out of the ordinary for them to come back to us or the applicant and request additional information to clarify things like, how much acreage have you disturbed? How much acreage have you restored? And is it consistent with the bonding that you have in place? Things of that nature.
On page 67, my last page. Is the total reclaimed area after the mine completion, is it, is it all the land or is it a specific area? Is the whole 500 acres reclaimed and bottom unisement? Or is it going to be sections of that and then it's going to be broken apart? How's that?
No, the entire property, only about 200, I think 230-something acres is actually going to be part of this excavation. All 230 acres that are part of the excavation will be reclaimed in one form or fashion consistent with that Army Corps approval. Some of it will be turned into grassland habitat, some of it will be reforested. Our hope is that we find suitable material at and below the water table to create open water habitat and to create wetland habitat as well.
Yeah, I realize.
So, yes, the entire...
It's not the whole property that's going to be...
They're not proposing to excavate the entire property, no. No. Less than half of it.
So whatever is excavated, that's what's going to be protected?
That's what will be restored.
Restored and protected?
There's requirements for permanent conservation easements over the wetlands, the wetland buffer areas, and I believe that encompasses some of the areas that will be restored, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the audience?
I think what caused the problem with all this was, it was strategic realty. Why did ONG, why doesn't, they're the company that's doing this, why did they go through someplace called Strategic Realty, which is really Rossin Trucking in Putten? Why didn't they just be upfront and say, okay, we're the ONG company, and what's the, I think that was such a confuse, that was so confusing. Why didn't they just?
The original permit that was issued on the site was in the name of ONG Industries. Since that permit was issued, Strategic Commercial Realty is a corporate subsidiary of ONG Industries. I'm not sure why it matters what the name of the applicant is, nobody's trying to hide anything, it's pretty common enough.
Well, that's what has been happening over many years in this town. So if you would come out and said, okay, we're ONG, we're from Torrington, Connecticut, we wanted to do all this gravel operations, blah, 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 but no, it went through Rossin. Is that because they have to go on your property to get to the property? That's what I don't understand. You have to go on this...
The property is owned by ONG Industries.
Oh, you're saying the property?
Again, Strategic Commercial Realty is a subsidiary of ONG Industries.
So recognize.
For the record, Jeff Rossin, President of Rossin Materials.
Right, I know.
So just to explain the whole relationship to you a little bit.
Right, but that was the problem.
The processing facility in the front, that was formerly owned by Hopkins, that is owned by Strategic Commercial Realty Inc., doing business as Rossin Materials. The property in the back that we're discussing tonight, that roughly 500-acre property is owned by ONG Industries. Strategic Commercial Realty Inc., doing business as Rossin Materials, purchases the material and operates the site that is owned by ONG. We pay them for the gravel, we bring it to the processing facility and process it there. There's nobody trying to hide it.
But it's still your company processing?
Yes.
Okay. But to get to the land that they wanted to get to, they either had to go through Route 14, I mean, you know where your stage seven of projects is going to be, is going to come out on Route 14?
No, we cross the railroad tracks and go right to our processing facility. We put it, we spent, what, a quarter of a million dollars to put in a railroad crossing, so we didn't burden those town roads.
So there won't be a lot of Rossin trucks or whatever going down Jackson Road?
Do you want me in? Zero. Zero. We will continue to...
There's no access on Jackson Road?
We will continue to bring gravel from the back up to the front to process. Well, one thing to keep in mind is, we're testifying in a public hearing that there will not be truck traffic leaving this site on public roads to get to the processing facility.
What about the Rossin trucks that go through?
We're specifying on the plans, it would be approved as part of this application, that that would be the case. If trucks start coming out on Jackson Road from this property, it's a violation of any permit that this commission would issue, and it would subject the applicant to a cease and desist.
But there are some Rossin trucks that do cut across on Jackson Road.
If I can address that.
Yep, please.
We own three trucks, okay? My trucks are housed in Putten, and they go to Unilock and Oxbridge every day. They are not on Jackson Road.
I see two trucks of Rossins go by this week, big trucks. I also see a tanker truck go down Jackson Road today. How would you like to have a sandbank 200 feet away from your property? I don't think you'd like it. We don't like it neither. Thank you.
I just want to, just to clarify something, is Jackson Road restricted from truck traffic?
It is not.
Okay. Is that something that is determined by the plan of DEP, whether a road is restricted to truck traffic, or?
I don't believe that we can restrict a road from truck traffic. I think the best we can do is if there's a bridge on the road, we can put a weightlet on it. But we can't restrict any road in plain field from whoever uses it.
If I see any more, I'm going to take a picture of it.
Okay, but one thing we have to be careful of is, we're discussing one application here tonight. So this application is about the project that stretches from Route 12 to Jackson Road. Currently, is there a driveway access from the property to Jackson Road?
There's a woods road that four-wheelers use, but there's not a, there's not a road suitable for trucks.
Okay. And there's nowhere on the plans that's indicating cutting the driveway from the property onto Jackson Road?
Correct.
Okay. So we have to deal with the application in front of us right now and the information that we have. So if there's an issue with truck traffic or other stuff, that would have to be outside this current application, because we can only deal with the information that's on this application. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't want this to devolve into something that's completely separate from the application that we're reviewing. So does anyone else have a comment? I have some questions I want to ask, but I want to make sure the public gets their questions first. So is there anyone from the public?
Yeah, June Gagny, I'm on Jackson Road. And last time we had a meeting, there was a man here from Oak Tribe, and he was concerned about all the sand and gravel, so we took a ride down, it's not far from us, and even in the middle of the winter, there's sand, there's sand all over their houses and property and the roads, and right behind it is a row of arborites, and they're all chewed up by deer. Now, beyond that, I believe is one of the excavation sites. If you look on the map and... I'm just wondering, because that's kind of like a track record. I don't know if these people are all related, who has that site behind Oak Tribe?
That's our processing.
Take a look down there. It's pretty dirty in the middle of the winter. I feel sorry for them.
We relocated a pile of approximately 90,000 tons of concrete sand, so that we could try to alleviate a dust concern that exists.
Well, it doesn't look like it's being done, so that's what I want to...
If he has that complaint, is to notify the zoning enforcement office, so they can contact the owners of the property?
People don't always understand that.
Yeah.
Or afraid to, or they don't know what to do, or they go to town hall and...
Oh, absolutely.
And run up against...
Yep. And have you noticed that the vegetative buffer has been destroyed by animals, that it might have to be replaced?
I haven't noticed that, but I will be checking that.
I have pictures, if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, I'll be checking that.
Okay, so if you could just look into the dust control in that area?
And I wonder too, I know a member of the PNC was able to go down there and see the operation, if there was any way, maybe the residents could see it, maybe have video done or something, just so we could see what's going on back there, because we really don't know. You only know what comes out onto the road and...
That would have to be organized with the owner of the property.
Okay, because I know a PNC member was able to get it.
Do you have a procedure for public visits of your site?
We'd be happy to put one into place.
Yeah, that would be great, just so we know. Yeah, that would be great, just so we know what's going on.
Okay, so contact the company directly to arrange.
ONG?
Yeah, I'd be happy to get that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have one last question. When you restore the land, are you filling it in with anything? That would be detrimental? Because I heard something.
No, we're not filling anything with anything detrimental.
You're going to have these holes.
A lot of the area gets filled in with the fines and silt that's flushed out of the materials returned back to...
You wouldn't be bringing in questionable materials to fill?
No, absolutely not.
I have a question.
Yep, I have a question.
I just wondered, how deep and how extensive is this aquifer? Is it going to be damaged? And I can't believe, I can't believe there's going to be any damage to it.
I can't believe that there's going to be any damage to it even as far as how deep and how extensive it is. We haven't done detailed studies of the entire aquifer to find out and answer that question.
But you're not digging into the water table. You're staying five feet above the water table throughout the whole project.
In general, in some places, it is our intention to dig into the water table to create wetland habitat.
Because you're creating a wetland based on the Army Corps approval of creating habitat.
Yes.
But that's not the act, the act was a certain distance down below.
Dave, why don't you, Dave, why don't you explain there's between the water table and the aquifer? Because there seems to be a lot of confusion with that.
In certain instances, it's the same thing. If you're digging into the regional groundwater table, you're digging into what would be considered the aquifer.
Where people are concerned about their wells, so they're talking about hundreds of feet down, not five.
It would not be having any impact whatsoever on their wells.
I don't believe that.
My name is Kenneth Florani, on the record playing a firm as ONG Industries. I was appointed this, you know, maybe with the last hearing in February. Just to cover a couple of questions and comments that the people had. As I indicated in February, I've owned the company almost thirty years and without question, the due diligence that we performed on this property was far and away much greater than any other site we've ever developed for aggregate production. We spent six, seven years prior to even filing our application with the Army Corps, identifying every single wetland on the property. That includes the entire corridors on the west and the east side, Sugar Brook and Horse Brook. All the isolated upland wetlands that are pocketed throughout this area. And then, once that was done, we hired biologists to study the amphibian populations at the internal pools because, as you know, that's a pretty popular issue, a juror issue, a decade, or whatever you want to call it. And identify what types of amphibians, certain types of salamanders, wood frogs, et cetera, inhabit these areas for breeding purposes. Because there were two species of concern in Plainfield. One is the blue-spotted salamander and the other is the eastern sprayed-footed toad. So we hired appropriate biologists to study those specific areas. We identified all the different types of amphibians that use various habitats. And based on all that work that was done, including groundwater modeling, or monitoring, so we understood where the water table was, which is basically the surface of the aquifer. We know where the water table is and the topography itself is quite unrelating if you can imagine over five hundred acres. So some areas we might excavate fifty feet or sixty feet, other areas it might be twenty-five, thirty feet, depending upon what that distance is from the surface down. So we did all our due diligence with biological monitoring. And then, working with the Army Corps of Engineers, and as Dave pointed out, when you file an application with the Army Corps, by definition, they refer our application to all federal agencies and the state. It goes to U.S. EPA, it goes to Fish and Wildlife, and it goes to DEEP. And they all get an opportunity to get a bite of the apple. And it was a fairly extensive iteration process. And we had many meetings, either on the phone or on the site. We walked it many times with all the regulatory authorities. And we ended up developing a plan where we set fairly extensive setback buffers on both wetland corridors, Sugar Brook and Horse Brook. We imposed a two-hundred-foot permanent buffer, permanent setback buffer. No activity, not even tree clearing. It never could be developed, it never could be cleared. We could never do any test holes or anything. Other than whatever existing access roads might cross that area, that's a permanent buffer on both sides. On top of that, because of the isolated wetlands that exist in various locations, we incorporated two-hundred-foot setback for that as well. And then where there happened to be the potential where species could move from one wetland to another, we protected those areas. So when you, on the surface, when you have five hundred acres, as Dave pointed out, we're not going to be mining the entire five hundred acres. It's less than half that, maybe two-thirty, whatever it is. But that's going to be phased over a very long period of time. Phase seven, where we pull the setback area back two hundred feet. Again, that's two hundred feet from the right-of-way line, which is probably about fifteen feet or so off the edge of the pavement. We're two hundred feet plus from just the wetland boundary. So on either side, west and east, it's far greater than that to the closest residence. And as far as the mining of the sand and gravel, there would never be any impact on any well. The water table is where it's at. All the work that we will do on the surface won't change the height of the water table because it's highly permeable soils. So the infiltration rate's going to remain the same. And we're only reclaiming with natural earth and material on the site. There's no importation of anything. It's all natural material. And again, when we do the reclamation, again, because of the size of the property and the, from a longitudinal standpoint, how long it will take to, it's phased and we've agreed and the regulatory authorities have patted us on the back for it to develop various habitats for them. Not just forested ecosystem, but grassland habitats and so forth. And we did that by design. And as Dave pointed out, when we began to excavate some of these areas, like Phase one is pretty much done. Phase two will be south of where we are now, which would be further from Jackson Road. Jackson Road's the last area. I hope we all can live to that point. I doubt any of us will be around by that time. But we can all, you know, have more for thinking. But as we proceed in these various areas, if the material is good, we've left it open-ended with the regulatory authorities to possibly create open water habitat areas. Because that's, because there are none on the property right now. And if we can create that type of habitat, we will, along with shallow water habitat zones around that. But the key, if and when we do that, is that we want to make certain that we don't create a decoy for the salamanders or the wood frogs that use those types of areas for breeding. Because we don't want to have them try and braid and then it doesn't work. And then you can, you know, the population become extinct or whatever. No, so we've given them a thought. And when we create these areas, we're not experts at creating grassland habitat areas. But we'll retain the experts to help us develop those management areas. And it's all part of that phase-based schedule that, you know, you all have an opportunity to look at. So from an aquifer standpoint, that's not going to change. The water table will still be where it is. Only where we create some, might create some ponds where the water table will be exposed. Otherwise, it'll still remain as is. I hope that helps.
Could you turn to page four, let me read. So on the plan, we have the seven pages. And this is the two hundred thirty of the five hundred acres, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So of the five hundred acres, you've divided the two hundred thirty acres that you wanted to disturb into seven phases.
Correct.
Now, Phase one is the current existing operation.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So on the, I believe it's third to last page. So on the third to last page of the report. And also detailed on pages two-six of the four engineer permit, the mining plan. It talks about the rolling of the phases. So as you excavate part of the phase, once you've hit a certain completion rate, then you're required to start the reclamation of that area. So it'll never be two hundred thirty acres exposed. It'll be a rolling reclamation. Okay. Because I did see they set limits on how much can be exposed at one time. Is that right? Okay. So they're not digging in every phase. They have to finish where they are, start the reclamation, and then, once they have reclaimed, then... Because there's a maximum limitation of the acreage that can be exposed at one time.
Yes.
Okay. So looking at this plan, it looks like the plan maybe began in 2012, the information on the plan?
Some of it is based on the start of operations on the site, but I believe in 2004, 2005, the bulk of it is...
Okay. So when we're looking at Phase one, if we make the assumption that Phase one started in 2004? Okay. On this page of the plan, it indicates the approximate timeline is eighteen years, which we understand market changes, weather interferes, so...
Which is going to be just about right. They started in '04. They're probably going to be complete with Phase one excavation at the end of this excavation season. So it will be in about fourteen years.
Okay. So what is the projected timeline of opening up Phase two?
Phase two would probably start next year. At least the clearing of it. Part of what we're restricted by is a time of year restriction for clearing the phases two because of concerns over long-year bat. So there's been instances where the applicant will clear an area, but not necessarily stump it and start digging maybe for a year or two just to make sure that they don't run out of material.
Right, I did see that as well. So Phase two, approximate start time next year, even if it's not the digging part, the clearing of the property.
Clearing more than likely and maybe doing.
Okay. So the Phase two is projected approximately seven years. So that, sticking with those timelines, so we apply those timelines to each of the phases moving forward?
Probably reasonable.
Okay. All right. Did any other commission members have questions?
Just a quick question, just to piggyback on what Susan. Did I understand at the last meeting that you had already started on some of your recreation for Phase one?
Yes.
Is it possible that the citizens can see that and see what it's going to look like?
Yeah. Actually, that would be part of the...
I see on here, low driveway. Are you going to develop that as a way to get into the property?
There is an approval in place to do that. It has not been constructed at this point in time.
But that's right across the street from the other operation.
Correct, and that's on purpose.
So, yeah, there would be no Jackson Road.
The reason that that driveway was designed and approved is exactly to eliminate truck traffic through Plainfield so that the material that's excavated on that other site across Route, across from the low property on Route fourteen, would simply cross Route fourteen, drive through the woods to that processing plant. And there's, other than that crossing, there's no trucks on the road.
Right. And that seems like it would eliminate a lot of the concerns that the people have.
It's not, it's not part of this application, but there is an approval in place to allow that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board members?
How much did that first phase weigh so far?
I believe about ten acres.
How much total was that, Phase one?
Phase one in total is forty-nine acres, I believe. Right now, they've got Phases nine and ten, which is ten acres, which has been cleared, but hasn't been excavated at all yet. So there's been about forty acres of it warped in one way or another. Ten of which has been restored.
How much is open brown土地 in this current?
About thirty. A significant portion of that, I think, will be reclaimed during the spring, summer, fall, if we're getting it up to grade after the treatment against red土. So I want your presentation established.
And did I see a hand over there? Yes?
My name is Eric Glado, from Plainfield. I think the lady will be in question. Can you demonstrate the land, up toward the, in here? Well, this floor area is seventy-six feet, to give an idea of this way.
This is two hundred fifty feet from here.
No, seventy-six feet.
So, sorry, three of these rows would be two hundred feet.
I have no conception. Can we tell you this slide?
We times this from someone's backyard.
Sue, it's two hundred feet, not two fifty.
Any other comments or questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
If they go two hundred feet, why can't they go five hundred feet? Thank you.
Art Gagny, ten Jackson Road. I have a few questions. One, I guess, isn't on this, but if you make that access road on to fourteen, that crosses to the other Rossin property.
We really have to stick to the application we're looking at?
Well, I just, I just want to say one thing about it is concern for safety with truck crossing because the sun gets in the eyes.
And that would be part of the state DOT's review of that access, correct?
Good. As far as the aquifer, if you take off fifty feet all the way down to five feet above the water table, have there been tests, have there been any studies done to determine whether it's going to dry up? And then we'll all have to drill deeper wells? Do you understand what I'm saying? You're taking off fifty, fifty feet of soil. Now the sun works, it's magic, right? And dries things up?
No, but there won't be any change in the seasonal fluctuation of the water table or whatever it is, maximum high groundwater elevation.
So you're saying this right now guaranteeing? So if it happens, because I'm going to live, okay? I'm only fifty-five. I can come back on you if I have to drill my well deeper. Okay.
The work that's being done here is removing earth and material from the surface down to...
Five feet above.
At least five feet above the water table. That will not impact the seasonal variation in the water table. As you know, it'll be highest in...
It won't impact the aquifer. That's all I care, is the aquifer, where we get our water.
Whatever the quality of the aquifer is now or remaining, which because it's been, it's been all forested for all this time. And if anything, the water table might increase slightly because instead of having some steeply sloped areas that run off and maybe evaporate or whatever, you might get a little more recharge. But in general, it's the water table that changes. The aquifer will change.
Okay. I appreciate you doing the cutback on Jackson Road. I had a question in good faith and goodwill. If, if your company could see, clear to take it down some pine trees in that area. Now, listen, I'm serious, because I've been there twenty-seven years and that corner is on the north side of that hill, okay? And it's just, it's impossible. I've seen so many people go off that road because of that.
That would be a side discussion with the company.
Is it?
That would be part of that discussion.
When we, when we do the tour? That's, I could talk to them about that?
I'd root that up at that time. I don't think that's part of this application.
Actually, our highway foreman did mention the same thing. The signage doesn't get to the road.
It doesn't. That's why, you know, there's enough maples and oaks there that you just strip the pines. Not, not when the owls are roosting, of course. But that was a concern of mine. Oh, and there was one more thing.
Yep.
The Sugar Brook and the Horse Brook corridors, I believe in the Army Corps of Engineers, is five hundred foot setback, not two hundred feet.
No. The difference is, is a two-hundred-foot permanent setback for the protection, for a permanent buffer. Then from two hundred feet to five hundred feet is also considered part of the critical terrestrial habitat.
Okay.
So that total amount. But that area can be excavated and will be excavated. And whatever end use of the property is down the road, you know, whatever you might use the property for would happen. But it's got to be properly managed so that when you reclaim that area, the two hundred, five hundred foot area, the three hundred foot strip, that will be forested ecosystem as well.
The other thing to keep in mind is when, when any excavation in that quarter does take place, it has to take place in a very specific sequence so that no more than twenty-five percent of that area is disturbed at any one time. The idea is to keep sufficient habitat around there to support whatever's living in the wells. So if you get to twenty-five percent, we can't disturb any more of that until that twenty-five percent has reached a certain level of restoration.
Yes, Paul?
Walter Smearigan, I have one question to you.
Sure.
While you're on the subject, I have a map here and it shows...
Midriff Archaeological. Widdish map, is it, Wally, so we can follow along? Fix the color book.
The archaeological one. I have a couple of questions on that. Look at the legend, the legend of Midriff Archaeological and modern... Have explained that to the archaeological...[1763.52] Could you explain that to the archaeological?
Absolutely. Uh, I never, I didn't even mention it, because nobody raised a question. But, in addition to doing the entire game of, of biological monitoring and assessment, identifying what was what, and the groundwater monitoring and so forth, we're also obligated as part of the core permit, to do an archaeological analysis. We hired an outside firm, I believe they're in Rhode Island, who are very good at what they do. First, to do an overall assessment of the area, and then identify high probability, low probability, moderate and so forth. And based on that, not surprisingly, the areas of most critical concern tend to overlap the, the biologist's perspective of protecting the immediate areas along the, the wetlands, because that's where, way back when, Native Americans used a lot of that, wetlands for their food, cover, protection, everything. So, the bulk of the high probability was along the corridors, Sugar Brook and Horse Brook. But when we were proposing the internal road that you mentioned, we were obligated to do a detailed study. So we, Provost Rivera had to go out and stake the entire, the entire centerline of that internal gravel road, from Route fourteen back to the access road that exists already on the west side of the railroad tracks. And then they went in there and, and covered that entire area, and said, okay, of that area, here are some areas where you need to do some more intensive research. So they, they went back a second time, and did all these test pits to identify whatever artifacts there might be. They identified some, but basically, they were run-of-the-mill type settings, where they were common throughout New England, eastern Connecticut, whatever. Those reports were prepared and submitted, they, Massentuckah P'Quod and whatever other tribes had an opportunity to look at those reports, they were satisfied with what was done, and we, we met our obligation. We didn't come across any archaeological sites that needed to be preserved or remove the artifacts, whatever, so we crossed that too.
Or on bare ground, or...
Correct, correct.
I have one more question. Are they willing to give us a written guarantee that if they ruin our wells, each person enters on Jackson Road, are they willing to give us a written guarantee that they will put us in new wells?
Kent Ferro, ONG?
Yep.
We would be willing to provide a well guarantee. We've done it at our quarries, which, where we mine rock, where we drill and blast ores, we're not doing any mining, excuse me, we're not doing any drilling and blasting here, we're not mining rock, we're mining sand and gravel. But we will certainly provide that, make it part of the record, we'll use the same language that we use, if there's any probability, and again, it's not, if you say it is, but we would have to hire an outside engineer to say, yes, your work caused that well to go dry, or whatever, lose its yield or whatever, we'll provide that guarantee for it.
I would prefer a more routine.
We will, we will give that as part of the record, for this being...
It's difficult, it lives on Jackson Road.
But that would be something separate and apart from the application? That would be something that would be privately done between you and the company, that's nothing we could dictate to them.
Do I say, are they willing to give us a written guarantee, each one of them is on the road?
Yes, as, as a condition of the permit, we can give you a copy of the language that we've provided to many of our neighbors, where we have excavation sites. And again, typically, it's at our rock quarries, but you can make that as a condition of the permit, that we provide that well guarantee. And we'll make that, we'll give you a copy of that, I, I'd have to be after hearing close, but for the record, that we will submit that.
Okay. So he is saying he'd work with you on that, but it's, it's not something we could make as part of the application itself?
Just one more question. Two-hundred-and-fifty acres is being excavated, out of five-hundred acres, or whatever it is? When it's all done, it's supposed to be left to a land trust, Plainfield Land Trust or something? Am I correct on that?
Parts of it will be, that's yet to be determined.
Okay.
Either DEEP, or a private land trust, or not, or quasi-public land trust, whatever, that entity is to be determined in the future.
Right, right, but what I'm asking is, is it the two-hundred-and-fifty acres that's being excavated, or the whole five-hundred?
No, no, not the whole five-hundred, but the areas where you have the permanent buffers.
Okay.
And those areas total would be about two-hundred acres, give or take, right?
About two-hundred.
Yeah. So those will be under stewardship by either DEEP, or Plainfield Land Trust, whoever it might be, that, that's to be determined.
And, and the rest of the five-hundred acres is still owned by ONG?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it may still always be owned by ONG.
Right.
Those permanently protected areas would also be encumbered with conservation easements, which would...
In fact, within the next couple weeks or month, we will be recording these, and finally, for the conservation easement, for that Phase One area, with a map. Because we're nearing completion of Phase One. And if you look at the phase-based schedule, as each phase is completed, then Provost Rivera will prepare a, a two survey of the next section or phase, that will become part of that permanent easement, permanent protective easement.
Does the company might be donating the land, or is land trust, or is the title of the pilot land?
No, no, it, it will remain, again, like they said, ONG will own it, or is successes or assigns, we'll still have title to it, we don't know what, you know, forty years down the road, ONG's plans are. I know I'll be retiring before this.
Is there a possibility they could still want to go in and dig out?
No, 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 again, the, the permanent buffer is just that, a permanent buffer, no, not even a shovel full coming out. So that would be permanently protected. We may still own title, have title to it, but there's, it's an overlay, that area cannot be touched.
I think another thing to keep in mind that's important is that, if ONG in five years decides to sell this property to somebody else who does excavation and mining work, they're still obligated to follow the same conditions with the plain ONG guys. It runs with the land, not the owner.
But it is for use for Plainfield residents after that period?
It's not.
As a land trust? For walking trails, or, no, nothing? It's just gonna sit there?
What's important to remember, because I think that's where we're getting, this is a privately owned property. So what the Army Corps of Engineers has done is given them permission to reclaim and create habitats. So those specific habitats have been preserved permanently. So regardless of who owns the property moving forward, those newly created protected habitats will stay protected for the duration that travels with the property. But not all five-hundred acres are considered a protected habitat.